Everybody ready?
Yeah.
All right.
That was fast for me, I don't know about you.
So, welcome to the Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three School Committee Meeting.
It's Tuesday, August twenty-second.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's Tuesday. You can tell I'm reading. Welcome to the Tuesday, August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three School Committee Meeting. Would you all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. And welcome to the visitors and I should probably still let people know that if you have questions, you can email them to scinfo@pembrokek twelve dot org. And we will do our best to answer the questions that come in during the meeting. So, no adjustments to the agenda. And where do I go next?
Under Communications, I think Allison has something she wants to share.
Okay, Communications, Al.
Hi, so I just want to let the community know that Pembroke is in the process of forming a all-girls BSA Scout Troop. It's going to be Troop One Four Three, and we are having an open house for it on Tuesday, September twelfth, from seven to eight-thirty at the Bryantville Meeting House. We would love to get as many, it's basically sixth grade to eleven through seventeen girls involved. We need five in order to start the troop, which I think we have. We have an email address, trooponefortythree@pembroke@gmail dot com. And I'm hoping at our next meeting to invite some, either the PAC or the DEN one oh five to lead the pledge and do a flag ceremony and invite one of the other people getting involved with starting this troop to kind of give a overview, more information. So, I just want to let the community know, September twelfth from seven to eight-thirty at the Bryantville Meeting House. Thank you.
And then I just want to add also, welcome to Patrick, welcome back to the committee. So glad you're here and looking forward to having, you know, your wisdom in over the next eight months. So, thank you so much for volunteering.
Well, thank you, Patrick.
Then, at this time, let's, we'd like consideration for approval of School Committee Meeting minutes of July eighteenth, which I talked about at the beginning of the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some votes?
Second. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, so be it. And at this time, we'll do the School Committee reorganization. Do you, shall I hand it over to you?
Before you do that.
Oh, okay.
I do have just one request. And I think you may have done some of this when Susan was here, but I think it'd be good just to really understand and just kind of go through again, make sure the committee is fully aligned on what do the, what are the roles, right, of Chair, Vice Chair, of Recording Secretary? What is it that we, you know, we believe they are, and let's make sure they're aligned getting into this?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm absolutely okay with it. Do you want to go ahead and take the lead?
No, I'm good. So, I may have a bit of a historical, I don't know if some of it's evolved, right? But, you know, when, when we've done this over the years, you know, the Chair is the lead spokesperson for the committee and is the main partner for the superintendent. They're setting the agenda, but that doesn't mean that things that the committee might want on the agenda doesn't go on the agenda, right? You contact the superintendent and you're the Chair in order to figure out sort of what it is that is reasonable to be put on the agenda. The Chair is also going to be sort of the person who speaks on behalf of the committee when the committee asks for the Chair to do so, and you know, we have the relative directs, the committee directs the Chair to do so. And then I think finally, it's really about, and the hardest part, I think, sometimes is when we're in debate and then we have a vote. It's regardless of where the individual votes, the vote of the committee is what the Chair would bring forward regardless of whether or not it's for them. To me, the Vice Chair really steps in on behalf of the Chair, and the Chair can be there. I mean, it's sort of like even Vice President, you know, hopefully no funerals if they have to catch, but other than that, you know, it really steps into that role. And then we're super fortunate to have Natalie, who is a fantastic nurse, doing the job, taking minutes and what have you for quite a while, been in the executive session, being the Secretary with three minutes and read up the minutes and submit them on behalf of the committee. That, to me, is roughly the, the roles, but I don't know if you guys have a different perspective.
Just for clarification, we have been meeting at Policy Sub and talking and reviewing policies, and I think the intent moving forward is to change the name from Secretary to Clerk. That is pretty widely used in school committees and select boards and whatnot, so.
So is you.
Moving forward, it'll be clerk.
Yeah, absolutely. Does anybody have any questions or comments? That, Allison, Mike?
I feel like we did this recently.
We did.
The only other thing too that I would add that Patrick missed is that the Chair is really the liaison to the municipal council as well, so Joe Emerson, your attorney, speaks directly with the Chair. If there's a need for a different member to speak with the attorney, they would need authorization from the Chair to speak.
That's a good clarification.
Absolutely.
Thanks, I appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely, I think it's an important, it's important to revisit it whenever we can, just to make sure everybody understands, so. So, next on the agenda is the School Committee reorganization, so at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Erin to do.
Your favorite meeting today.
I'm going to remind you guys that when we were reviewing the policy, it actually doesn't state in the School Committee policy that you turn it over to me. It says that you turn it over to the Vice Chair for the nominations of the Chair, but I'm happy to do it this one last time.
We have the historical, that's the thing.
Right.
Yes.
So, I am happy to open the nominations for School Committee Chair for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
I would like to nominate Sue Volenger.
You have to vote to open first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, opposed. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Sue Volenger.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations for Chairs?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. And then can we have a vote for Sue Volenger for the Chair of the School Committee for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four year?
Second.
And it's roll call for this, so.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Now it's yours.
All right.
Yeah, all right.
And so I open it, I open it first. I'd like to make, you know, would like, someone like to make a motion to open?
You're going to, you're going to open.
All right, I'm opening the, what?
Nominations.
The nomination for Vice Chair.
Second.
So, I have, there's a vote to open it, right?
Yeah.
And all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, so the guys have it. Are there any?
I would nominate David for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you have.
By roll call?
Nope, you have to.
Oh, I have to close?
Yep.
All right, so I will close the nomination.
So.
Second.
Thank you.
Natalie will fix it in a minute. All right, we'll be in the moment.
This is hard, just so people know, this gets done once a year.
Yeah.
This is not easy.
You don't get to practice this very often, you scramble the first time you did this.
So now we take the vote by nomination, Patrick.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And yes.
And just for clarification, in the minutes, closing the nominations was your name, just that.
Sorry. All right. Now I open the nomination for Clerk slash Secretary.
I think Chris Gollwitz, right, and we need a vote to do so, correct?
Yep, yes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, so have it. Would someone like to nominate a person for?
I would nominate Allison, this is our tradition.
You're the newest member now.
My, my, this is what I'm hearing, we'll just say it right now.
I only got you beat by a couple months, essentially.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All right. All, and by roll call, all those in favor side with?
Let's close nominations.
Oh, close nominations.
Quickly.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Vote to close nominations.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Now, by roll call?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
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 All right. Again, um, yes. So there we go, we've been reorganized. So at this time, can we also just briefly talk about the subcommittees, just so that we can keep rolling going forward? Do we need that?
Sure, so I don't, I don't know that there's a need to make any sweeping changes to the subcommittees.
Right.
So, Suzie was on fiscal strategy and, I think, long-range planning. No, fiscal strategy and negotiations, so I, I.
I believe that.
Negotiations isn't meeting currently, we're not in a contract year with any of our collective bargaining units. I think it might make sense to have Patrick stay on for fiscal strategy for a little bit.
Absolutely.
And Suzie was also the liaison for the DEI Working Group.
Would you be okay being the liaison?
Yeah, I'd be fine.
Great.
And you're already on fiscal, right?
I'm already on fiscal, so we'll keep everybody else the same and then have Patrick take over Suzie's. All right. Great. Now we're on to the opening of schools update.
So, we have administrators from all five of our schools here. Obviously, there are some familiar faces, there's also some new faces, so we have a new principal here at North, Mike Van Berry is joining us. I sent you all his little cover letter when he joined us, but he is coming to us from eight years at Kingston Intermediate School, both as the Assistant Principal and the principal there. And prior to that, he did extensive work with the Department of Youth Services in Brockton and Fall River Middle School, I think. And we also have Ashley Cross joining us this evening, Mr. Murphy from Habermock is on vacation, don't worry, we've chastised him enough, so Ashley will be giving the opening of schools update for Habermock. So, I never care who goes first, Mike Murphy almost always goes first, so you all can fight it out if you want, but whoever wants to go first can go first.
I will.
All right, Jen, look at that, woo! Moving microphone.
Hi, everybody, how are y'all?
So just to remind you to speak loudly into the microphone, it does not amplify for those in the room, but it does pick up the sound for those at home, so.
So, I am very happy to give our opening school year report for Bryantville. Technically, as of today, currently, our enrollment is at four hundred thirty-four students. We will be welcoming sixty-one kindergarteners, which is an increase from last year, as well as twelve new students. We look forward to meeting them this Thursday at our new student tour. And we also have two students that were previously homeschooled joining us this upcoming school year. Four new staff and any staff changes. Our Administrative Assistant, Mrs. Brindle, retired, well-earned and well-deserved and during every minute, I'm sure. But I obviously needed somebody who knew what to tell me to do. So, I was very lucky that Erica Rusini was willing to join us from North to come over and help me out. So, her and Mrs. Nichols have gotten right at it, haven't skipped a beat. We are totally ready for all the kiddos to come next week. We also had to replace Mrs. Bonnie Murphy at grade five. She also made the decision to retire to take care of Bray and Bead. So, in her place, we will have Ms. Brooke Brindis, who was Pembroke High and then she went through these walls here at North Pembroke. She will be teaching fifth grade, no doubt, she'll be excellent. She's been working for Pembroke over the past few years in various different roles, so we decided to have her join us. And we also have Matt Harley. He became a part of the Bryantville Community last year, is one of our subs. The minute he walked in the building, Mrs. Brindle signed him up for the rest of the year, so he's basically with us every single day in some capacity. And he wanted to stick around, and luckily, we had a position, so he will be taking our street position, so basically the library. So what you see here, that will be his. We also are in the second round of the interview process for a school nurse. That I'd still say aloud. Katie Haley will be leaving us at the end of September. She also has earned a well-deserved retirement, I'm just not able to process it yet. But we will have someone, the first round interviews were great, I know we're going to have someone who will be able to make that transition seamless and will be a wonderful asset, but that will be, that'll be a loss, I think, that we'll feel for a little bit. And then we only had one grade level change, Mrs. Sam Powell. I feel like you must hear her name getting grade level changed every year. She's bouncing with our bubbles, so she'll be going from first grade to second. As far as new initiatives and curriculum, over at Bryantville, we added a fifth North River Collaborative Classroom. Last year, we brought in four, and they are very happy to be there, we love having them, so they had one classroom that was sort of left out in a different space, and we were able to move some storage around to give them, so now they have their kind of little hallway near the gym, so we're thrilled to have them join us. And I will just mention the Open Sayad curriculum quickly. Mike will talk about one of the other elementary initiatives, and Ashley will talk about one of the others, because obviously, all three of us are doing them. So, at sixth grade, we're continuing to do the Open Sayad curriculum. This will be their third year that they'll be doing the light unit, they've started been taking a unit a year at a time. So they started with light, last year, they entered sound, so this will be their third year with light, second year of sound, and now we're adding courses at a distance and or in space. The teachers have been provided professional development. I know Mr. Rosen came and he was just there recently. They have excellent contact, school consults, Jonathan Shapiro is wonderful. So, we look forward to continuing that work and having that expand to grade six. And aside from that, we're ready, the teachers have been in, the first cloudy day that hit, and they knew the rooms were ready, parking lot was full, our custodians, Jess, Marcus, and James, it's been ready to go for quite some time, their hard work is bar none, so I appreciate them and thank you to them and the office, and we're good to go.
I have a question, that's okay. You mentioned that there's a teacher that's leaving from first to second grade, are they keeping the same cohort of kids or different kids?
Not the entire, obviously, some of them just with the mix-up, but it's not like it's pure.
I can't believe Katie Haley is a veteran.
No.
My daughter used to talk about her friend Katie at school. I went in and met Katie, and I'm like going, Katie was like a forty-something-year-old. I thought Katie was like a six-year-old kid.
No, apparently, she's old enough to retire. My daughter had her fair share of time with Katie.
Hi, everyone, I'll go next. I wish this did amplify, because when you see me doing this, it's because I really can't hear, so I can't use the whole, the old man megaphone. I'm waiting for my hearing aids to get shipped in from Amazon. So, the North Pembroke Elementary Custodians and Office Staff have done a fantastic job preparing for the first day of school, and I was there, yep. A lot of time and effort is going into waxing the floors, painting the hallways. The grounds also received much-needed attention, they're actually working on the court dock right now, second day, they're going to come back for a third day. Could have been a pack of Bengal Tigers in there, so I'm really amazed at the work that they've done there. And I'd like to shout out to the PTO members that came out from the community on Saturday and helped clear the front lawn and the bushes, it looks fantastic. We actually have a Boy Scout troop that came out and they've relined our basketball courts for us, and they're going to paint my four-square courts. I've never heard of an elementary school without four-square, so we're going to have, because I like to play four-square. And then they actually, for one of their Eagle Scout projects, they put a Gaga pit in, so that's almost finished, that'll be ready for recess, they just need to add wood chips to that. Staffing updates, we're excited to announce our new staff members, Miss Elise Desmond comes to us with an extensive background in administrative support, she gained her ministry experience with the town of Kankstun, where she held positions of Administrative Assistant to the Town Clerk and Administrative Assistant to the Board of Health. Originally from Marshfield, she has resided in Pembroke for sixteen years, she has two children that attend Pembroke Community Middle School and Pembroke High School. She will now hold the position of Office and Administrative Assistant, replacing Erica Rusini, who has been over to Bryantville Elementary. Miss Barney McCarthy comes to us most recently from Pembroke High, as a special ed paraprofessional for the past four years. Prior to that, she worked at both Bryantville Elementary and Habermock Elementary Schools for several years, including working summers with the Extended Year School Program. She will now hold the position of our Office Paraprofessional, replacing Kim Samuelson, who held the position until she left North Pembroke at the end of the school year for a new career. Miss Leona Beard will be joining us as a paraprofessional in our Integrated Preschool Program. Last year, she worked at North as a long-term substitute, supporting grades two and three in a paraprofessional role. We're currently in the process of hiring a custodian for the second shift, and we'll provide the name of the candidate as soon as they are identified. If anyone knows anyone.
Dawn, Dawn, are you paying attention? He said we're currently hiring for the custodian over here again.
We'll talk later. Programming updates, we're going to continue our character tickets, this is, this year we are excited to continue the character education programming, with school-wide lessons and community meetings focusing on our core values. Bowling prevention and continue to foster culture of inclusion. Students will have the opportunity to earn character trade tickets throughout each school day. These tickets will then be put into a raffle at each month's school-wide community meeting. Every staff member in the building will be given a character trade ticket book and have the opportunity to catch students illustrating one of our core character values, responsibility, respect, fairness, self-discipline, integrity, trustworthy, citizenship, honesty, caring, and perseverance. Maybe that's something we started at the end of last year, and something that we really wanted to follow through with this year. to follow through with this year. And it gives all the students the opportunity to be caught doing something positive. So we're really excited for that. And as far as the curriculum update, for the second step, it's a social-emotional curriculum that we actually incorporated a couple of years ago in Kingston. It's an anti-bullying curriculum also that the state requires each district to have, so this will satisfy that need. Children need social-emotional skills to thrive both in the classroom and in life. Social-emotional learning, SEL, curriculum teaches children techniques to gain confidence, set goals, make better decisions, collaborate with others in work and play, and navigate the world more effectively. A lot of that is perspective-taking from the student's point of view and relationship-building, which is really essential in the younger grades when students are trying to navigate those personal relationships and figure out how to create personal relationships. When our mental health and physical education staff at the elementary level return for professional development on eight twenty-eight and eight twenty-nine, they'll be receiving training on the program, and they will be integral components of the rollout in the pre-K to grade six. Something that was really embraced when we did it in Silver Lake, and the teachers saw the significant need for it, and they saw a reduction in behaviors in the classroom as they began to incorporate classes.
That's great. Thank you so much, and welcome to Pembroke.
Thrilled to be here.
I have a question. Can you give us your enrollment numbers? I'm just curious about.
Five hundred and six. Don't pull me on that, but I think five hundred.
Thank you.
So I am here on behalf of Mr. Murphy, who decided to take a last-minute summer vacation. So I will be giving the Habamok update for back-to-school. I do not have the enrollment numbers. I know we're just shy of four hundred.
Yep. So it's three ninety-eight and then forty-nine kindergarteners.
This summer, Habamok once again housed extended school year for special education programming. We also had the early literacy program. We housed the YMCA all summer, and we had one week of camp invention. So our busy, our building was very busy all summer, which was great to still have kids in the building. Not so great for our custodial staff, who were under the gun to get everything finished the last few weeks, once the majority of the kids are out of the building. The YMCA is still there, but we've been shuffling them around to get everything else ready throughout the building. And similar to Jen, that one cloudy day last week brought everybody back into the building, which was great. So that's where we are kind of as far as building-wise, but we're ready to go as far as those updates. Staffing updates, we had quite a few. So we have two new teachers joining our team this year. We have a kindergarten teacher. We have just found out about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, that one of our kindergarten teachers would not be returning, relocating her family out of state. So we were able to hire someone this past week, and she is ready to go. All of her paperwork's ready. She was able to join us for orientation today. So we're happy to have someone solidified in that position so late in the summer. We also have a new special education teacher joining us, Carrie Connell. She's coming from Quincy Public Schools. I'm happy to report that our district-wide enrollment is growing, the special education programs there. So we are still at five classrooms housing the district-wide programs at Habamok, and Carrie will be assuming one of those classrooms. And she has a ton of special education background and also early elementary background. In addition to that, we had five paraprofession, paraprofessional positions open. Two were due to retirement, two were due to staff-taking positions elsewhere, and then a fifth was transfer from Bryantville due to enrollment. We did just find out that the individual coming from Bryantville has resigned, so we are still looking for one more paraprofessional. So again, if you know anyone, send them one way. But other than that, we're fully staffed and ready to go for the start of the year. And then as far as curriculum initiatives, I'm just going to talk a little bit about our science of reading initiative that we have been working on over the last couple of years, but we're really up and, up and running this year. So science of reading, I'm sure all of you have heard the buzz, the buzz term around that. Mary Beth, Jessica, and myself, as well as Valerie Sharpton-Tier over at North, our assistant principal, the last few years have been doing a ton of research and diving deeper into the science of reading, what that is, what it looks like at the elementary level. And it's really essentially the science behind teaching kids to read. A lot of those strategies that are embedded into teacher-practical programs even to date are not necessarily the most effective, not the most scientifically-based. So we're really trying to shift that philosophy into a more scientific approach. With that, we partnered with the University of Florida at the end of last year to do some professional development, as they came out with a really comprehensive scope and sequence to teach phonics in pre-K to three. There's a little bit of a gray area overlap. We had some representatives come out from the University of Florida at the end of last year to do some training with staff members. All of the administrators were trained. We did have a handful of teachers that joined us. Our reading specialists were also there. So we really got a great two days' worth of training. When teachers return on the first day of school, they will also, any teachers who didn't attend in the spring will then be receiving that training then. It's actually a great program because it's cost-effective. All they needed really is the manual to get started and some training. Of course, there are some supplement, supplementary pieces like magnetic tiles, decodable books, and things like that that will build as we go. But really, to get off-the-ground running, it's just that manual, and it's very easy to understand. But we want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable and understands the program before we try and roll out an additional literacy program to kind of supplement the other areas that we feel like we're lacking with the curriculum piece in the LA.
I have one question. We're back to Mike. Mike, how many kindergarteners did you guys have? Did I miss that number or?
I'm just lying, sorry.
So it's a total, total enrollment at North is five twenty-one, and it's fifty-four kindergarteners.
I just ran out.
Fifty-four kindergarteners.
Sorry about that, Mike.
I just, I joke about them coming, the teachers coming in to the school on cloudy days, but that's just to set up their classrooms. They have, we've got an exceptional number of teachers working all summer with Mark Galigan and Jonathan and Mark Duffy, Mary Beth, coming in to do those UCLI trainings and to work on the curriculums and to talk about report card changes. And so we know they're working all the time. It's just coming in.
And sometimes the custodians don't want them in too early because they are trying to work on the floors. So there's also that. So hello, I am Donna McGaragall, the middle school principal. The enrollment for this year is three hundred and sixty-two students. There are a hundred and sixty-five students in seventh grade and a hundred and ninety-seven students in grade eight. We have six newly enrolled students, two in grade seven and four in grade eight. My guidance counselors started last Wednesday early. They reached out to each family individually to greet them and welcome them and invite them in for individual tours. So some of the new families have already kind of been in for tours, are kind of general tours for everyone else. Starts tomorrow, so we do them tomorrow, Thursday, and then Tuesday. Custodians have kept the building sparkling clean. My thanks to Bobby Flynn, Rick Page, and Josh Johnson. In anticipation of the students coming for tours, they spent the day outside trying to get the grounds really pristine so it matches the inside. And on the first day of school, we'll do a sixty-minute Titan Study in the morning to help with orientation, and then additional thirty-three minutes kind of after lunch to give them lots of time to get to know the building and then new teachers, new staff. So the new assistant principal team chair is Erica Swift. So Erica and I have worked together for years at the administrative team, so we already had a really strong working relationship. We've also been on multiple committees together, so there already was that really good rapport. Erica obviously has elementary administrative experience, but she also has special education experience at the middle school level, as well as administrative experience at the middle school level. So she brings all those strengths to the middle school for us. So it's been a really good summer. Our schedule can be a tiny bit complicated. So she has picked it up super bright, picked it up really quickly. So it's really been a pleasure and a very productive summer working together to get that very complicated schedule up and in the mail and out to go. So that's done. We have a new PACE teacher named Gina Leahy. Gina was, worked for like ten-plus years at Social Educational Collaborative, so she's kind of very familiar with the students' needs of what she'd be working with. She's been in multiple times, dragging in boxes and other assorted materials, as well as gathering information from us to make sure she's really prepared. She planned on reaching out to her families. I got an email tonight, so she'll probably reach out to them tomorrow just to welcome them, so they get a little bit of a connection. And then Dan O'Neil is going to be our support person in the Titan Room. Dan has, is a great guy. He has been a sub for us. He's really consistent. He connects really well with the staff and the students. So we're really excited to have him in. I've worked with him a little in the spring anyway, in preparation once we hired him. So we're excited about that. I do want to thank Mark and all the PD just out, Mr. Overstreet, and they have just been incredibly welcoming. So like throughout the spring, we were able to go and visit their program, and I kept sending more and more people. And that's actually my plan for the fall, too. So this is like me asking Mark if that's going to work out okay, as well as Erica and I meeting with Mark this summer to continue that work. So just wanted to make sure that we have the right supports in place for that. So I really am very grateful to the community in Erin for supporting that initiative and being able to build that at the middle school. So we're looking forward to that very much. And then not new, but new-ish staff member is Ms. Saviez. Saviezada. Saviezade. Okay. So she's the content supervisor for the world language, but she's going to be teaching two sections of French at the middle school. So I think that'll make for some really nice continuity from seven to twelve. So we're looking forward to that. So we're rolling out a new initiative this year called My College Academic Plan. I was doing a lot of preparation for it last year with a team of people. It is to give kids more exposure to college and career options. I think that in general, if I have a lot of doctors in my family, doctors feel something like attainable to me, right? Or if I have a lot of teachers in my family. But what we don't always understand is the breadth of choices that students have when they go to college or in different positions. So the goal is to help students get better exposure and also tie that exposure back to the content and skills we're teaching to help school become more meaningful. So each teacher is going to teach a lesson on college and career options. So if I'm an English teacher, I'm going to take the skills I'm teaching, and I'm going to think of some way they can apply to college or career, and I'm going to teach it. Math, elective teachers, everyone's doing it. And then we laid out an annual schedule so that students are getting minimum one, once a month, from a different teacher to a whole school year. We'll do that over two years. Desi had provided us some seed money, got a four to five hundred grand for the initial kind of planning work I did all this year with the team. And then we bought a forty thousand dollar grant in, I don't even know, May. They just like, "Do you want forty thousand?" I'm like, "Let me check." So I have never seen forty thousand dollars spent, period, but I've never seen it spent so quickly. So we really focus on technology with that. And we got drones and microbits and snap circuits, and we got three D, enclosed three D printers, and we got laser printers, and we got like coding software and professional development for the teachers. And I don't even, all the other stuff, I'm not even sure what it really is, actually. So we just, we got a lot of stuff. So we're really excited. Some of that equipment and materials is going to be feeding into our new elective, which I had to write it down because it's a mouthful, introduction to programming, animation, drones, games, and microbits that you would have seen in the program of studies. So that's the new term elective in grade eight. But in addition to that, we're planning on doing a technology club. So again, we just want to make sure we're increasing access for all the students with the different equipment we have and build their skills and understanding on that.
What a great idea.
It's so amazing. I'm so excited. I'm really excited.
Well, you're making school a real world.
So yeah, one of the things we talked about, in addition to the content skills, is there was a big multi-layer research that looked at transportable skills, it's called, that applies to everywhere. So it's called problem solving, critical and creative thinking, collaboration, communication, ethical reasoning, and mindset. So in addition to the content they're teaching and those skills, they've got to embed that. Because we want kids to understand, like, the things we're teaching you are, you're going to use your whole life. So we really just want to layer for kids and help really create the meaning and the connection, but also expand their understanding about their choices. They're lucky, right, to live in a country like this where there's so much choice. But if you don't understand the range of your choices, right, you become a minority. So I am very excited about the mistakes, yeah.
I absolutely love the idea, and I love the push toward technology also. And I'm just curious, do the kids actually operate the drones?
So in the spring, they were operating them, and they were giving them, so there's easy ways to code drones, and then there's a hard way. So we prefer the hard ways, right? So they were giving kids challenges where they had to go so many feet, go low, go up, go. So they were doing it in the hallways to make it like challenging and coding it versus just using like the cell phone for directionality. So, yeah, they all were playing with it a little bit in the spring. So, yeah, the kids will get a lot of really, really good exposure. And I think that'll feed into all the programs, right? The rich offerings at the high school. So I think it just makes us an even stronger school district.
And I would imagine a lot of the kids will think that's really cool to be able to try.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's great.
I'm trying to hope he's sure.
I'm pretty sure my son has it the first term this year. So I'm super excited. I will have to see how much she's willing to share, but I'm super excited. He comes home wanting us to buy him.
Yeah.
I can see like, I really want.
One other piece of great news that goes with Donna's news is that that money also applied to the sixth grade. So the sixth grade is also getting through stream. They'll get Tinker Cat licenses as well.
Wow.
And three D printers.
I have one of those, too.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Mary Beth, was that a grant we applied for?
Well, kind of. I think we, they said, "Do you want this grant?" And we put on names and then did a yes box. We checked the yes box.
It wasn't a big application.
I didn't say whoever wrote that grant, we got to make sure we keep in this program.
No, it was a very easy, it was connected to the MyCap like team that I had. So they had money connected to it. So then at the end, they just, I guess, I don't know. Yeah, it was, it was a beautiful.
That's amazing. It's amazing.
I'm really excited about that one.
Yeah, me too. I'm so excited. Sorry. So questions?
Any questions? Mike, I really hope your update is exciting.
I'm going to get some of that forty thousand dollars. I thought I used the compass program all so often, you know? So it's nice to be here, and it's nice to see all of you again. Patrick, welcome back. It's great to see you. We are welcoming seven hundred and twelve students to the high school next week. We graduated one ninety-four back in June, and we are bringing in one eighty-six freshmen, at least as of today, one eighty-six. And their freshman orientation is tomorrow morning from eight to eleven-thirty. We have thirty-nine student ambassadors from the juniors and senior classes to lead those freshmen through. What we feel is a very informative and helpful orientation, right? Just the nerves are going to be there on Wednesday, undoubtedly for them, no matter what we do. But to show them where their classes are, where the locker is, we give them their schedules in paper copy. They have a chance to talk to their guidance counselors. They have a chance to talk to Dave and Kristen, me, of course, as well. And they have a chance to talk to the senior leaders and the junior leaders about school, right? Like, what can I expect? What are some advices, what advice you have for me to be successful? Study strategies, balancing it all, strategies, that kind of stuff. So, and then at the end, we play a couple of, you know, mini pep rally games that we do during our spirit week. We give them a taste of that. So a minute-to-win games culminating with the tug-of-war at the end, which everyone loves that, the tug-of-war. So we're looking forward to tomorrow. We're looking forward to welcoming in those one hundred and eighty-six kids. And we're also looking forward to giving those thirty-nine upperclassmen a leadership opportunity, right? A chance to grow their own leadership skills, because they really run the day, right? We frame it for them, but then it's those thirty-nine kids that are kind of in charge. And we enjoy watching that. We enjoy watching how those kids kind of take on that responsibility. That, that number of seven twelve does not include the twenty-four students that will be with us for two weeks in September from our sister high school in Madrid, Spain. We are reconnecting with Galileo, Galileo High School in Madrid. I believe, Patrick, that you hosted a family, correct?
Yeah, the trophy.
I think Mike did.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So we have not done that since COVID. And now that COVID is, well, I won't say anything about COVID, but we are hosting twenty-four students. They arrive on September ninth, and they leave on Saturday the twenty-second. But in between, there's two weeks full of all kinds of great things for them, and we're looking forward to that. So we'll have that cultural experience for the year. I think like the other principals, I'm really proud of the custodial staff for what they have done to get the building ready. And I'm not saying it's not difficult in the other schools, but the high school, because it's used so often for so many things during the summer, between athletic camps and athletic practices and marching band camp. And this year, we had an active shooter training at the high school with the Pembroke Fire and Police Departments. That really took up a week where the custodians could not access the academic rooms for cleaning and waxing, right? That's a week where they have to kind of change gears and go outside. And they did a great job just rolling with all of that. And we've got some work to do because, you know, And we've got some work to do because, you know, that week put them behind a little bit. But I have no doubt that this week, they're going to wrap that up and we'll be ready to go. And a couple of building improvements, one of which was handled by the custodial staff. And the other two were handled by certainly other contracted services. The custodians finished phase two of our three-year painting cycle. Last year, they painted every classroom on the first floor. This year, they painted every classroom on the second floor. So that's our English world language in our social studies classrooms. And then next year, they'll be on that fourth floor where the art wing is and business classes, that's in the guidance suite. That's the final phase of that. So that every classroom will now have fresh cone of paint. We have new rules for hanging things in the classrooms. No more masking tape and Scotch tape and things of that nature. So I'm looking forward to those teachers seeing their classrooms on nights they look. We also successfully installed seven new rooftop units. Those HVAC units, we've talked about for so many years. I know that Allison Smiley, Allison was on high school school council last year. And my updates for that every month were, it's been delayed, it's been delayed, it's been delayed. And they finally took care of that. Those are fully functioning units, fully operational, and it's wonderful.
We were doing that when I first left.
Sure, sure, sure.
There's sixteen more that still need to be replaced, but wonderful.
But at least those ones are working, right? So we can deal with that. And then the return of Titan Wireless is also a reality. So if you remember back in October, we had some problems with the wiring outside of the school. And we were never able to really get Titan Wireless back up and running reliably. There were a lot of reasons for that. But this summer, thanks to Brandon Hall and James Shulices in the tech department, that's all up and running. I am on Titan Wireless right now on my phone in the building. So the students and staff will be happy when we have our opening day technology session and we all join Titan Wireless. So some good building improvements happened as well during the course of the summer. When the summer began, the hiring season was looking to be very short. We didn't have a lot of openings at the beginning of the year. And we did hire a new biology teacher. Her name is Katie George. She comes to us from Brockton High School. She was an unfortunate reduction of force from Brockton High School. She would not have been let go if not for budgetary constraints. They reduced a significant number of staff in Brockton back in the spring. And we are very fortunate to have scooped up Katie. I think one of the best, most impressive parts about her interview was that she applied, was hired at Brockton High School in September for something entirely different. It was not to teach biology. And then they had a biology that left in October. And they said to Katie on a Friday, starting Monday, you're teaching biology. And she, oh, okay. And she did. She jumped right in to a classroom that had already been kind of used to certain routines, right? The teacher was there for six weeks. And she, she was thrown at the fire. And she was tremendously successful there. All of her, all the recommendations all started off by saying, we didn't want to see her leave. But unfortunately, the reality of the fiscal situation is what it is. So we're very lucky to have Katie. Since then, we had two resignations at the very end of the summer. Last week, we had two teachers resign to take advancement positions in other districts. They're lateral removes. They're moving on to administration, both of them. And so we now currently have an opening in the phys ed department and another biology teacher. We have had interviews already and we have very good candidates identified. We're just trying to land that plane, right? We're trying to make that happen between now and the end of the summer. By the end of the week, really. So.
You can get it, huh?
Right? We've got the candidate identified. We're just trying to, you know, make it, you know, unofficial, which I hope to do so very, very soon. That will create an opening in the Spanish department, one of those potential hirings, because it's an internal hire. And anticipating that, that was a possibility. We believe that we have a Spanish teacher as well, a real good Spanish teacher. But again, I'm going to reserve naming anybody because nothing is final yet for those positions. We hired, well, we have, have to hire four paraprofessionals, instructional paraprofessionals. We have two signed. We have one more offered today. And we have one more that we're interviewing for tomorrow. We have a couple of candidates coming tomorrow. So hopefully, all works out well and we'll have those positions filled. The one candidate or the position that we're interviewing tomorrow, the paraprofessional, she also resigned last week. She took a different job altogether. I don't, her name was Karen Rich, who was our compass paraprofessional. She came with us last year. She is a wonderful, wonderful certified life coach. And she was awesome up there. She took a job back for a private firm, kind of a health and wellness consulting firm. That's really her passion. So again, I support her moving on to being better things. It's kind of what we enjoy doing. I just don't want to lose good people. But I know sometimes it's part of the deal. So that position, we are interviewing for that this week, her vacancy. And we're hoping to have a good candidate identified really quickly. In terms of our goals this year, I think we have a couple of important ones. So as I had told this committee before, the NEAS collaborative conference visit, which happened in November, their report from that visit came back to us late in the spring, very late. And they, usually, they were telling us to get that back. They said, we need to get that till June. And so working with them, I read the report, Mary Beth and I read the report, the administration of building read the report. There are some recommendations there in that report, which, none of which were a surprise to us. Division of the graduate, for instance, was one of the things we knew we needed to work on. We have established that vision of the graduate. It's now in our handbook. It's adopted by the faculty. And so that box is checked, right? Because that's obviously one of their recommendations. You have to get a vision of the graduate. The second step of that is you really have to embed it in your school's culture. You have to assess students' progress within the vision of the graduate.
What do you say?
So essentially, Patrick, it's similar to like your core values and your belief in learning, right? What, what do you expect? What transferable skills do you expect every Pembroke High School graduate to leave the building with? Okay? And so for us, we've kind of narrowed that down to general, broad umbrellas. We want them to be empowered learners. We want them to be effective communicators. We want them to be engaged citizens. And we want them to be really successful collaborators, right? And then there are kind of bullet points on each of, we took those umbrellas, okay? But we have to now measure their progress towards becoming an empowered learner. And how do we do that, right? And how do we put up the families? So that's going to be a major goal for us this year, all right? Finding that partner. And as a reminder, the NEAS folks come back to us in the fall of 2024. All right? So we'll have this whole school year to really get going. And then even the beginning part of the next school year to prepare for them to come. And then they write a second report about how well we did, you know, making the adjustments necessary.
That actually gives me PTSD. I remember it.
The process has changed since you left. And it's a much more friendly process. It's a much more collaborative process. We wrote the report and identified our own weaknesses. And they then read the report and they say, okay. Then if you're identifying these, how can we help you close the gap?
Oh, that's different.
As opposed to coming in, got you, got you, you're right, and they're doing that. So it's a, it's a much different process. And it's an enjoyable process, for sure. So that's certainly one of our major goals. The other one, of course, is to continue to grow the pathway program that we started last year. As you recall, we had three pathways last year. And we had, I believe, fourteen or fifteen students go out or eleven went out on an internship from the senior class. And then another five or six just chose the certificate program. They didn't go on an internship, but they wanted to take that test to get the certificate of the pathway. And don't forget that those seniors we identified in September from the senior class as students who have already kind of done the pathway work without knowing what it was, because it wasn't really a thing in their freshman through junior years. But because of their own interest and their own coursework and their own program of studies, they, they were capable of running the pathway really in a short period of time. Very proud of Marilyn Gates for what she did on the ground to identify those students and to get them, the internships, to complete the pathway circle, you know? This year, we are rolling up the biomedical pathway and the business and, I'm sorry, the engineering pathway. So we now will have five. And as I was saying, we had fifteen or sixteen kids try it last year. We now have two hundred kids who have identified a pathway, right? In grades nine through twelve. Mostly it's nine through eleven, right? Because the seniors, again, late start, they were juniors. There are some, certainly that's in your class. But because of the expectations, the number of things they have to do, it really is, it's the students who are in grades nine and ten and eleven that are kind of driving that, those numbers. There were seventy students who elected for the biomedical pathway. Seventy is an amazing number. So we're looking forward to kicking those, those, those programs off. We have four full sections of Principles of Biomedical Science. Four full sections, you know, four classes running at the Honors and CP level. The class is differentiated, right? It's Honors and CP together with differentiation happening. The same thing with the engineering program. We have three full sections of that, also combined Honors and CP. Our teachers spent this summer getting trained and professionally developed on those courses. Patrick read the way. And we're just pumped to get it going. So things are looking good. We're excited about the year for sure.
I'm excited to see the pathway program growing. That's really great. Any questions?
Was that expected or like, how much moving around do you have to do for that many sections?
I would say it was expected. I don't, yeah, I thought that we knew it'd be robust, particularly in the biomed.
I've heard already.
Because again, I know Mary Beth mentioned this before. We polled the students, you know, a couple of years ago before we were, to see what their interests were. So we knew how to, you know, have a vision and a plan. And biomed was off the charts, right? So we're not surprised. And I'm happy that so many students are able to actually get into the pathway. I know there's some concerns about, there's just so many things to do. And I wanted to also be part of, you know, this course or this program. And I can't fit it along my schedule. And I think there's a little bit of that still, but there's been a lot of flexibility. There's been a lot of cooperation and collaboration to kind of make it work. We've kind of made a few adjustments to the expectations and requirements. So I wouldn't say it's a surprise to have those numbers, no. And I just, I envision them going up.
That's great. Any other question, Mike?
I actually have a staffing question, if that's okay. So one of the things that you addressed, you're close with biology. We have an ELL teacher. Can you give us an update on, according, not in the middle school, the ELL teacher?
Right, so we've had a posting open for an English language learner's teacher since the beginning of the summer. There has been some applicants in the pool, but we have not found the candidate for us yet.
How do we cover the class, I guess?
Right, so you'll, you'll remember, Patrick, that ESL instruction is an unfunded mandate. And so we do do the best that we can with the staff that we have and the services and minutes that need to be provided. And so obviously, students will get some exposure with ESL depending on their proficiency level. And we will, you know, obviously, work with the staff that we have until we're able to get somebody on board.
And then with the night custodians, which I know from people in my own household telling me how hard it is to hire a custodial role, how is that? Will we have coverage? Are we just going to like?
Yep, so the way the custodian works, the role works, if we don't have, if we're short on the night shift, then the day shift custodian stays for a few hours at the end for overtime, for coverage, for, you know, some of the necessity functions. There were some great interviews for custodians today. So hopefully, we'll have those positions filled rather quickly. There's two positions that are not on the list that you have there. So you heard, you did hear Mark reference a PE position at the high school that's not listed on here because that was literally like two days ago. And then we have Mark Duffy, our content supervisor for K through twelve mathematics, has also left us to take a position in Plymouth. It's a really exciting position. It is obviously an upward move for Mark. It is the principal of career in technical pathways.
Career.
Director of career and technical education.
Pathways at Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School. So it's a, it's a great opportunity. You know, obviously, Mary Beth and I are still in contact with Mark. And we've had great conversations about steal everything you can from Plymouth so that in three years, when we're there, we're there at, we'll have a resource to, to really rely on, so.
So then how did those get covered?
So content, the humanities, science, and math content supervisors do not teach courses right now. So you remember that that model has really morphed ten different ways since the traditional Jamar Penn, Department Head model. So we're not looking to cover any courses for the start of the school year. But obviously, it's a valuable position for our building administration when we're talking about observations and evaluations and really support for our teachers, content-specific support. So we do have a position posted for a couple of external and a couple of internal applicants. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to put something together for, for the school year. If it's not, you know, we don't just want to put someone in it to put somebody in it. We want to make sure that the candidate is the right person for the job. And that is really difficult at this point in August. There's not a ton of people left in the pool. So, you know, looking at what we have internally and seeing if we can give somebody an opportunity that they're interested in is really our first, our first hope. Any other questions? I can see on your papers that you guys have been feverishly writing down enrollment numbers as people are rattling them off. And so I just want to remind the five of you, as well as the audience at home, October one is the date at which we record enrollment for a specific reason. There is still a lot of fluidity between now and October one. The numbers that you heard the principals cite tonight do not include the, our eighteen to twelve-two population that resides at the middle school. We have eleven students there. It does not include preschool, preschool counselors, four of the student in the formula. So those are not included in the numbers. I can see Patrick has glaringly written down minus sixty-eight. That is not actually the change in enrollment from last year at this point. So there's still some fluidity. There's about six families that are currently still in the registration process across the district. And we're still working with some of our homeschool families. As you heard Jen say, a couple of Bryantville families have come back. There's a high school family that's coming back. So we're still working with families. October one is the date that we record enrollment.
Do we know how many eighth graders are not coming to the high school for variety of reasons?
Yep, so the numbers of students that we have that go to private school or a peripheral school, going to eighth grade, I'll send that to you on October first as a enrollment. It's just not, it's not out. So we'll show you by grade, by school. I think you also, Jen mentioned that she had twelve new students to the district. We'll do that report.
I do think though, well, I get it, it's not fine. I was actually going to say, I also know that I'm sure that we do remember. I'm not remotely surprised that the case of a listed. Even with the case of a listed, though, we're likely to be down.
Right, I'd estimate we're down thirty-five students across thirteen grades in five buildings. To me, that's, that's flat.
The only, I mean, I think the only issue is it's on top of, you know, sort of a declining period. And we'll talk about it in a second, that we'll have to get our arms around. It would have been great to have a plus.
Yeah, it's tough. But from what I understand, being on the master planning committee, this is an overall trend throughout the state. It's not a Pembroke thing. So he's brought statistics to us showing that Massachusetts and New England in general has seen a decline in enrollment in a lot of the schools. And oddly enough, southern states like Texas and, you know, some of the midwestern states have an increase in enrollment.
Does the population?
Yeah, it's just a shift, exactly, so.
It's funny to me, the whole reason we're so worried about how many students we have and increase in students is for the state funding. It's funny to me, the whole reason we're so worried about how many students we have and increase in students is for the state funding. Every town is, is losing students. So what the heck is happening with the state funding?
Right, it was, it's a good question.
And all I read about when I read the papers, how the state has lost cash and it's trying to get away. But somehow that's there.
Well, Donna got $40,000.
She's the only one.
Donna's getting it all.
My guess is that one guy was in the middle.
People are saying we're losing about a thousand people in the state. And some of the, I hate to say it, over the world statistic, but, you know, we're losing it to Florida, we're losing it to yourself. Infinitely reasons, and that might take a thousand dollars out of this, but they keep it on somewhere. And I'm hoping that's true, or that we won't have to.
Yeah, so it is an interesting, you know, thing that's happening.
It will be very interesting.
Yeah, something to keep an eye on. All right, so moving on to the superintendent's report.
Sure, I'm gonna let the building principals go. Some of the events and long days with orientations, with chores and other matters, you guys are more than welcome to.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Nice to meet you.
So under my report, the first thing is the personnel report. Most of it, I do just want to highlight one very exciting personnel piece of information. So every year, we do try to celebrate our staff. We have three staff members that on the first day of school this year will have professional status. So Nicole Terrio, who's a social worker at Habimach. Heather Smiley, who's an elementary teacher here at North. And Widad Elphalali, who is a world language teacher at the high school, will be professional status teachers on the first day on August 28th. So that means that they've completed three years here in Pembroke and they are fair to say, hopefully, so.
That's great.
Amazing group there. I practiced Widad's name seven times. Wrote it down phonetically. In addition, in my report, you'll see there's a whole host of surplus materials. The first one is for North Pembroke Elementary School. There was a concerted effort here. I remember in the spring, the sixth grade ambassadors came to the school committee meeting and talked to you about some of their initiatives, which included cleaning up the school, really championed by staff members Meg Snead and Jocelyn Christmas. They were able to take an inventory of things here in the building. There was this ginormous yard sale swap thing that happened where teachers put all their extra stuff out in the hallway. People could walk through and take it for their classrooms. At the end of the day, we're all left with a list of items, materials, and whatnot that are no longer in working order or are outdated. You'll remember when you all deem something surplus, you're just giving us permission to dispose of it in the best means necessary, recycling. We obviously, with textbooks, we try to give them back and sell them back to the publisher if there's any value to them. The ones listed here have no value. We recycle, we donate, you know, we reach out to other departments in the town to see if they have any use for any of the items that we have here. I know one of the ones that will jump out at people is there, there is a piano on here.
Oh, God.
It is not the piano. I'm at the high school, but this piano is no longer working. Gwen has taken a look at it. We could have somebody come out to see if it was worth fixing it. It is not, so. Other than that, I think the stuff on here is pretty standard.
You almost just ruined my first reading, Mike.
All right, so we need a motion, right? So I'll take a motion to approve the surplus materials list for North Pembroke Elementary School.
As presented.
As presented.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next in your packet is a list of textbooks from Bryantville. Again, outdated copies of texts that, that we're no longer using. Nothing, no pianos over there, nothing too exciting.
Moved to accept the Bryantville list as presented.
Second? Is there a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do think it's interesting, there's books from like the 90s on this.
Yep. The third request for surplus is math textbooks. So again, we were not gonna let Mark Duffy leave until he cleaned up the bookroom at the high school. So you have in your packet a list of math texts at PHS that are no longer the books that we use. Looks like Mark was a bit of a hoarder, if you ask me, based off of some of these quantities. But again, these books have been replaced and you've seen them come through some of the budget conversations we've had in the past few years, as well as the warrants that you all sign, so.
Moved to accept the PHS surplus math textbooks as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, under my report, we have for approval, two foreign exchange students for Pembroke High School. I included in your packets their applications, so this is what we receive. Cultural Home State International is the same organization that we have been working with for the past few students that we've hosted here in Pembroke. You'll remember, a few, a few years back, we did adjust our policy in regards to foreign exchange students just to really update the fact that organizations that were listed and named in the policy were no longer kind of the leaders in, in the cultural program. So it gives discretion to myself as far as what the company is that folks are using. But Cultural Home State is not a new organization for us. We have used them in the past. One of the other things that's new that we do look at, and to the point that Patrick made earlier, is we do pay specific attention to their fluency level. You know, we don't want to take in students, exchange students, that would put more strain on our ESL teachers in need for services. So both of these students have a pretty high level of English proficiency and would need additional services from our ELL, ELE teachers.
Erin, do you need our approval for this?
I need your approval for this, yes.
So moved to approve both international exchange students as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're anxious. They do want to get here for the first day of school. So Jennifer Ainsley, the woman that works for this company, has emailed me no fewer than three times to make sure it's on the agenda for tonight. Should she come? Do we need anything? So they are excited.
Very great add to the school community.
It is, it is great. And then as Mark referenced, we do have the cultural exchange here too. So they will overlap a little bit, which will be great. And Mark didn't highlight, but there is some plans for those high school students to come to each of the elementary schools too during the two weeks that they're here so that the elementary students can start, to start thinking about it.
The international exchange students count in our enrollment, right?
Depending on how long they're staying, both of these students are long enough that it is, yes. Yeah, they'll be here on October 1.
Can we keep the 24 a little longer?
They will not be here on October 1.
All right, so moving on to the subcommittee updates.
So we have done some subcommittee work since we last met in July. In your packet, you have for consideration for second read and approval, you'll remember in July, we took, we took a look at policy KHB, which is advertising. The intent was to add electronic advertising. As you'll remember from July, the catalyst for that conversation is the sports program that we're using Huddle in order to live stream our sporting events, both on the turf and in the gym. Huddle allows for electronic advertising. Obviously, it would need to be in alignment with our policy on, on what we allow for advertising. But our current policy did not even reference electronic advertising. So this would give us the ability to do that, to work with Huddle. The intent would be to sell, for lack of a better word, enough advertisements to pay for Huddle, which is about $11,000.
How likely is that?
Very likely. So Huddle works with most of the communities around us and people have had no, no problem filling the ads.
Who, who owns the selling of the advertising?
It comes to us. So it would go through, just like we did when we did the banners on, on the turf field. Yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve the second read of the revision to policy KHB advertising?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Quick question now. Are we just approving the second read or are we approving the policy change?
Well, this is the, this would be the policy change, right? Once the second reads approved.
It's technically a second read and approval.
A second read and approval, yes. Okay. Motion for a second read and approval, thank you, of the revision to policy KHB advertising.
Oh, it's moved, I'm sorry, so moved.
I'm sorry, all right. And second is right. And all in favor?
Aye. I didn't need to be pedantic, but that stuff can come back to bite us.
It's my first day as chair, so I appreciate the little, you know.
All right, I just want you guys to buckle up. So the next thing that you have under the policy subcommittee update is we have embarked on the, on God's work of the revision of the policy manual. I have PTSD from this with Ginny and Sue. But Allison and Sue are very kind and willing to help me through my PTSD and the shakes at times. So we started with section A, which is foundations and basic commitments. And so what you have in your packet is an overview of what our policy manual has, as well as anything that we were looking to add or whatnot. So what we did was we took a look at the current policies we had against the MASC sample policy manuals that were out there. We wanted to see if there were policies that had been updated that we needed to make revisions to, as well as if there were policies that were included in that list that we didn't have. What I'm showing and moving forward here is all of section A, which is a very short section for us. So you have the first policy in our manual is AED. The AED policy, there is no MASC policy associated with AEDs in school buildings. It's a state law. And so when we did this work eight or nine years ago, we really, one of the overarching kind of goals that when we're looking at policies is why would we be restating the state law? So at the time, AEDs were not part of the law when this policy was put in place. They are now part of Massachusetts law, as well as part of the emergency medical response plans that we need to have as a school district. So we are asking to rescind the AED policy because it is covered by the law. Do you want to go one at a time or you want to do them all together?
Let's do them all together.
Okay. So obviously, this is just a first read on these changes, so if something else comes up. So policy ADF is the health and wellness policy. It pretty much mirrors the policy sample that MASC had. We do have a wellness committee here in the district. There's no revisions that we were looking to make to do it right now. But we did ask that the wellness committee take a look at it when they convene in the fall to see if there's anything that they would like us to add. Next up is policy ADDA, the criminal record offender information inquiry policy. Again, this is covered by state law, therefore not needed in our policy manual. Policy AFA, approval of private school. This one was a new one for us a few years back. We did, the committee was approached, I think, eight or nine years ago by a private school that was looking to open within the confines of the town. And that requires that the school committee give approval to that private school. So this policy was created in a line, in alignment with the MASC sample. We're not suggesting any changes to that policy. Policy 3.28 is a smoking policy. So this policy maps through to an A, a series A policy in the MASC sample, which is why you're seeing it here. We do not need a policy aligning that smoking is illegal on school grounds because schools are considered drug-free zones. So we are recommending that this policy be rescinded. The last one in here is policy AD. It's the last policy in your packet. You'll see it's all in red because it would be a brand-new policy for us. The MASC had a sample policy in reference to mission statement. What is printed here is the existing Pembroke Public Schools' core values and mission statements and goals. We put this in there as a placeholder. Obviously, you all haven't really landed on your school committee goals for the year. But we also haven't revisited this document in several years. I do think the policy subcommittee obviously understands that there may be some revisions that, that you all want to make to this as a group. But we did want to get this in there as a first read as a placeholder for policy AD mission statement.
So I have a couple of questions if that's okay. And I don't mean to ask so many questions, by the way, I'm catching up, so forgive me. But the, the last one, the mission statement. If this would just pull in, if we're pulling it as a brand-new policy, if we take it for a first read, does that trigger the timelines?
So it says you have to, you can't pick it up within two weeks and you have to pick it up within six. But if we're not going to pick it up within six, I'll come to you and ask you to.
For the next ten?
Yes.
So that was the first one. And then the ones where there's no action to take right now?
You don't need to do it.
You don't need to do anything at all?
Nope.
And then the ones that we're rescinding because they're covered by state law, is it possible to make an exception to the policy and just rescind them here?
Yeah, you can take it as a first read and approval instead of.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions other than, any questions on what we're doing or why?
Are you guys okay if we take it as a first read and approval? Because we're rescinding it to the state law.
I mean, based on our conversation during some policy, it's definitely.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to, to take as a first read and approve the rescinding of the AED policy, policy ADDA, and policy 3.28 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll take a motion to accept as a first read, policy AD mission statement.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I just have it.
The reason why I told you to buckle up because section A was really easy. Dawn can attest to the fact that section B is much lengthier and dry. So I'm gonna break it up into a few pieces so that we take a couple at a time. And we are continuing the work. Policy sub meets again this Thursday to start section C. And we've kind of mapped out a series of dates in hopes of kind of getting through this work over the course of this year, so.
Can I ask you a question on the work? And this is just for my benefit, kind of coming up to speed. As you pointed out, and Ginny and Sue spent, I want to say it was like three years. Because the amount of work, it was ridiculous, the amount of policy work that I did. And you guys are seeing it actually, right? Are we hoping to do exactly kind of what we're like there? So hey, it's covered by law, we don't need it, we need updates and things.
Right, so we're hoping to make the, the online policy manual more user-friendly. So if you log on to the website now, all of the numbered policies are still there, as are the lettered policies. And the work that was done 10, eight, nine years ago was about mapping the numbers to the new naming letters. And a lot of that work happened. It didn't get finished. Both sets of policies are still on the website. We'd like to get to the point where just the ones that are active are and we can archive the other ones somewhere else. We also want to get to the point where each of the policies is a hyperlink. So you're just clicking on it, it's taking you to the policy and you're not scrolling through the manual. So, you know, it is.
Hats off to you guys. It is a huge amount of work.
We're just getting started, so.
Meet again this week?
All right, so under the vocational planning committee, though it's not a subcommittee of the school committee, it just makes the most sense for the update to go there. We did meet last night. Just a quick update, we are really looking at timeline and what makes the most sense. The last time we met, as I did to you, we, we took a tour of South Shore Votech and they were able, and Tom, thinking the superintendent there, was able to give us some information around their building project, the timing of, you know, when they're hiring, when they'll have the design phase, whatnot. He had a little bit more information to share with us just around when they'll have some cost numbers associated with the project. We talked last night about just the, the strategy on how you want to, how we want to present this to the full committee. Do we want to make, make sure we have concrete numbers? Are we comfortable presenting it when we have a range of numbers? So we are still kind of working through that. Originally, we had, when this first came about, we had talked about, you know, being ready this fall. I'm not sure that we're gonna be ready this fall because the numbers associated with the project at South Shore Votech are really, May of next year, they'll have an idea. So we as a, a working group are still looking at those options. And I will update you when we've, we've got a better idea of when the timeline would be to bring you guys our recommendations and then what that looks like going out to the town.
Could you clarify to me one question? I've heard two different things. The other eight or nine towns that make up South Shore Votech, is it a majority vote to get in?
So you need six of the nine.
Six of the nine, okay. Thank you.
I think, I think what you got mixed up on, Dave, I remember you said you thought that it had to be unanimous.
Yeah.
Was, South Shore Votech needs every town to approve the override. Is that right, Erin?
So South Shore Votech needs all of their member towns to vote in favor of their building project in order for it to move.
Right.
But as far as membership to South Shore Votech just takes a two-thirds vote of their current members, which is six of nine.
Does that include Marchfield? Are they the ninth?
Yes.
I confirm that six divided by nine is two-thirds.
Outstanding, Mike.
Two-thirds number might be a little scary.
That joke is never gonna go away.
Yeah, it's nine.
Okay, so future meeting dates and topics.
Yes, you all do not have any meeting dates on the calendar past tonight. Traditionally, you have done the first and third Tuesdays. Just hoping to hear what you'd like to do moving forward.
Okay, so we want to take a look.
So fifth and 19th?
So the fifth and the 19th. Does that work for everybody, doing the fifth and the 19th?
I am not available on the fifth.
You're not available on the fifth?
I am not. I am out of town.
How about the 12th?
12th and 19th they can do.
That would be true. That's just the day of that, that troop meeting is the 12th. I mean, if I, I don't have to be there, but.
Could we do, well, Monday the 4th is a holiday, but could we do the Wednesday of that week?
Wednesday that's.
Would that work, so Wednesday the 6th?
I'm, I'm out the whole week, that's a.
You're out that whole week?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't do the week of the 25th.
Can't do the, so the 19th is, that, so far, the 19th works for everybody, right?
Yep.
The 19th is my birthday. I'm happy to meet with you all, but Allison said you'd make cupcakes.
All right, well, Allison is in charge of making cupcakes.
Any allergies, anybody?
There's no better way to spend it than with.
Is there another day before the 19th that anyone can do?
Can we do the 12th and the 19th?
Well, 12th is out.
Oh.
But we could do, what about like either Monday or Wednesday of that week?
Monday's Labor Day.
Oh, Labor Day, Wednesday, the 13th?
No.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, it's the week of, Labor Day is the 4th. I'm gone from the 31st to the 8th.
But is that too close?
Yeah, it's not super helpful to meet on a Wednesday and then the following Tuesday.
That's true.
Do we want to do the 13th and 26th?
But he can't do it.
Oh, you can't do that week, okay.
So the 19th is definite. I don't know, do we, I mean.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we schedule the 19th? But I think, one of the things that I think we should all really try to do over the next couple of months is to the best of our ability, kind of clear out those first and, and third Tuesdays because there's gonna be so much work coming up, getting ready with budget, getting ready with sort of all the enrollment stuff that's coming up and what have you. Just, or we'll have to meet with a cohort.
David, are you, is he, are you, is he the only one that can't do the 5th?
Um, yes, but hold, hold that thought for just a second. What was the date you said you couldn't do the 12? You can't do the 12, right?
I mean, I can, but.
Well, what time is your meeting?
I mean, it's from 7:00, 8:30.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, I mean, I, I can miss that if that's, I just don't know if us meeting two days.
Yeah, I think.
One week in a row.
Now, it does make sense.
So that's why I just don't know if we should just meet on the fifth and have four of us.
Yeah. Or you can just, just meet once in September, the nineteenth, but then you have, there's a whole host of Tuesdays in October.
I think, I think if we do that, we'll be getting back on.
I, I won't be offended if you meet on the fifth. I, you know, I can get an update.
Let's plan to meet on the fifth and the nineteenth. And then we'll try to meet the first and third the following month. Does anybody have any conflicts with the third?
Third and seventeen.
The third and the seventeen, stick to seventeen. All right, third and the seventeen. So at least we have those tentatively scheduled. And then, uh, future topics.
So I, as you can imagine, have a couple that I'd like us to at least get on the agenda. So would it be possible to get, and, and this probably would be for the fifth, but maybe for the nineteenth, a three-year rolling sort of enrollment trend by grade level? And then average class size for elementary, because middle school and high school doesn't matter as well.
Do you want on the nineteenth or would you prefer to get it on October third with it including this school year?
Probably October third, including the school year, it would make sense, right? Because that will at least give us a view in one place of where we've been, where we are now, to be and kind of figure out what are we going to do, especially going into the budget series. And then we may want to budget submit one in weeks between now and the nineteenth for at least beginning to get a calendar together for what the budget calendar for fiscal twenty-five, can't even believe I'm saying that, um, looks like.
And also, um, any update on the joint, um, joint meeting with the select board and budget, the budget.
I can find out.
Yes, that'd be awesome.
And then I know at one point we talked about, I forget the name of the, which policy, but it was the migration dress policy. Is that something that can be put, is, that doesn't have to go through September, does it?
It does.
Oh, it still does, okay.
What we talked about was, um, it, so we are meeting Thursday for policy subcommittee, next policy subcommittee, subcommittee meeting after that is September fourteenth. But on Thursday, we'll talk about if we want to add a date specific, just to do that one.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, all right. Anything else? I think that's it. Any comments from visitors? Okay, so, um, do we have a motion to adjourn, uh, this Tuesday, August twenty-second meeting in school?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Great job, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your help.